All right, there we go. Good evening, welcome to the council meeting of June seventeen. Anyone in the audience need amplifying headphones, please raise your hand and we'll give those to you. Not seeing any, let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the rich and the poor.
Mary, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I can. Councilmember Blush?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Gilmar?
Here.
Mayor Nisco?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman?
Here.
It looks like Councilmember Sav is asked this evening, and I don't see her on soon. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Right, let's, anybody have motion to?
I motion we excuse Councilmember Sap.
Second.
Right, motion and second to excuse Councilmember Sap. Hold on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. All right, council have any late changes to the agenda? Not seeing any, city manager?
Nothing, sir.
All right, council have any board reports to share? Not seeing any? Is, does everyone have a chance to read the consent agenda published?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda as published, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. All right, council invites the public to make comments on matters of city business. Comments made to the entire council, not individual council members. Please refrain from any personal disrespectful remarks that create disruption in the meetings. If any reasonable disturbance conduct continues, be asked to leave. Mary, anyone set a general public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Kathy McDowell.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and Deputy Mayor. Is this on tonight? This is on, it's on.
Doesn't necessarily broadcast. Let's check. Screenwriters on.
All right, can we reset your time, Kathy? What I'm about to read to you is for the memory of Chloe. Something happened last week which affected our family. And before I get into that, I want to bring something to the attention of everyone in the city who owns a dog or plans to own a dog. Our city has an ordinance stating that dogs must be licensed, and they should also be on a leash and not running the streets. I was on the council when that ordinance was put into effect. And unfortunately, many people, along with some of our first responders, do not know that this ordinance is in fact part of our city ordinances. We must do better, people. Last week, my daughter and family were traumatized because they witnessed her dog, Chloe, was in her own fenced yard being mauled by a pit bull which was running our streets with no one with him. Chloe was Amy's baby, and as many people know, a pet becomes part of their family. So we all just lost a part of our family, and not just us. After the dog was found from the other family, they had to put their pet down also. So two families are now grieving the loss. I know that our city doesn't have the money for animal control, and I know that our first responders are understand. So people, it is up to us to control our own pets in the city. We must do better now so that Chloe hasn't died anyway. I have a poem for Chloe that I'd like to read. Chloe, Chloe was a dog my daughter raised, a family pet, part of her and part of us. Long walks, my daughter took around the city with Chloe by her side. And people marveled how friendly and kind Chloe was as she strolled out of the town. But today we sit in sadness because of someone's senseless act. A dog someone owned was free to roam and killed my daughter's bed. No sense can be made of this, no act can bring her back. The tears we now shed are a river of memories of how dear she loved her bed. So Chloe, as we say goodbye, know that you were loved, and up in that great big blue sky, you surely will be seen God love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our speaker is Amy Witt.
Good evening. So in light of the recent United States Supreme Court ruling addressing the legality of public encampments, our city finds itself at a pivotal crossroads. The decision reinforces the authority of municipalities to reclaim public spaces. And now, Sheldon must ask decisively. It is imperative that we follow the lead of cities such as Aberdeen, Bothell's, and communities that have successfully adopted a no lay-in ordinance to ensure the safety, accessibility, and dignity of the open spaces, and public spaces. The need for action is not theoretical, it's immediate and visible. Brewer Park, once a cherished community space, has become a blight. While we applaud the initial steps taken to address the encampments within this area, we now must extend the same commitment to the broader city. The vehicles, cars, and RVs now congregating underneath bridges and along the city streets are a continuation of the same challenge. Public spaces should serve the public, not become informal settlements that compromise health, safety, and economic vitality. We must be unwavering in our mission, make Shelton great. The goal begins with revitalizing our downtown and surrounding neighborhoods. It means ensuring that families, businesses, and visitors alike can experience our city with pride and peace of mind. Removing vagrants from our urban core is not an act of exclusion, it's an act of restoration. Furthermore, we must reconsider the location of the ETS truck stationed near Brewer Park. While its intent is noble, its placement undermines both its effectiveness and the integrity of the area. Social services should be administered in a dignified professional environment, not from roadside steps and inadvertently validating transient living in public spaces. Ultimately, Shelton and Mason County must strive to be recognized not for tolerance of dysfunction, but for leadership and solutions. We must direct individuals in need toward real structured assistance, housing programs, addiction treatment, mental health services, rather than enabling a cycle of visible suffering. Pretty valid points and pretty powerful. To enable what we're doing for the last five to ten years and trying to continue doing the same thing is the pure definition of insanity. We have two individuals here chastise the community about how they were embarrassed. Well, I'm actually ashamed of those two individuals for their words against their community. Okay? We put people in this council in their seats, and we can remove them. And I believe that's what Shelton is directing and we're heading towards. So appreciate what we all do. Thank you for the floor.
Thank you. All right, we're on to presentations. We have a presentation. April financial status report from Finance Director Terry Kinter.
Can you just a minute to load this up?
Let's.
The work really.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for your patience. There. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Tonight I bring you the April twenty twenty-five monthly financial report. And as you can see, it the twenty twenty-five estimated actual, it shows that the unreserved fund balance is at two point five million, which is a six hundred and seven thousand dollars increase from what we projected at one point nine originally. Yeah.
Good stuff.
So then on page two, we have the general fund overview of revenues. And just want to highlight a few of them where the property tax is staying steady. It's holding in right about what we had projected at three million. We, in May, even though this is April, in May, we got the bulk of the first half. So it's by with that, I can tell that it's trending where it's supposed to be. And with the sales and use tax, even though it shows an unfavorable amount of about seventy-three thousand, it's actually improved from March of about one point, one point five percent. So it's, the gap is closing and it's kind of in line with what we originally budgeted. But it's early in the year and we'll continue to watch it. So the business and occupation tax, it seems to come in fairly strong right now. Although I will note that as of April fifteenth, our yearly be no tax filers file. So this report includes that yearly filing. So we'll be watching that also. So, but it's, the revenues are coming in favorably about three hundred and eleven thousand over what was originally pre-nominated. And then on page three, we have the general fund overview expenditure by department.
Just slower up there.
It is.
Yeah.
Sorry, I can't read with my glasses on. Okay. Should have had you do it. There we go. So expenditures by department for the general fund. And it shows the twenty twenty-five estimated actual at sixteen million, which is a favorable amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand under what we originally budgeted. Just wanted to note a couple of things, just because the community development is, and the public works is showing an unfavorable amount, but that's just because we've had unfilled positions and we've had to contract out for that work to get done. So, and I believe engineering will place one of those by now. So, working on the other one.
It's a catch the bottom line. There you go.
Oh, there we go. Yep. Okay. So on page four. One fast enough on me. There we go. So on page four, we have the general fund year to year. And then on page five, we also have the general fund month to month that shows the years comparing twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty twenty-five. On page six. This shows the sales tax breakdown by type. And this, all this data comes from the Department of Revenue. And you could see that from twenty twenty-five through April, and then just April twenty twenty-five, the percentages are consistent, so they're falling in line with each other. And for page seven, we have the citywide fund balances. And for the, page is down a little bit. Our, the twenty twenty-five estimated fund balances are coming in at twenty-one million point five and where we originally budgeted twenty-six point eight. So even though we're still early in the year, we're watching it closely. And, but it's a good indicator of where we can start the process for a twenty twenty-six budget. So. And then.
Terry, if you don't mind, some of the, those numbers are skewed a little bit by some of the capital projects within our utilities. If you'll see the sewer fund and storm drainage fund, quimber rental fund. Those are some of the larger expenditures, and they're within those utilities and some of the capital projects that we have ongoing.
And then at the bottom of page seven, we show the citywide FTE by fund. And the vacancies of one and a half in the general fund and in the other city funds, the five and, five and a half. And then from pages just eight through twelve, it's showing the citywide overview revenue and expenditures where there it's at. It's in a rolled up level, so it's easier to read and review. And with that, that is all I have. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Share, I would like to share with Jay here.
All right, our next presentation is an annual report of the Transportation Benefit District. Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us.
Hold on.
But I take Terry out of the seat.
You can hold chairs tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, Jay Harris, Republic Works Director. I have my IT director here loading up the presentation. I normally be using my laptop, but I couldn't hook to the internet tonight. So, ways I have the city manager assisting me and.
He is failing right now.
That's all right.
We want to pick any?
Oh, I got, okay. I changed that. Back to who the manager is.
I'm the public reserve factor, I think he put.
So tonight I'm going to give you the twenty twenty-four Transportation Benefit District Annual Report. So that's our last year's report, right? So we're required by RCW there on the screen to give an annual report of the expenditures, revenues, construction schedules, and to the public. So that's why I'm here this evening. Next page, please. Hope we can get that. There it is.
He's getting there.
He's getting there.
By the end of this, we're going to have it down.
Yeah, we're going to have it down. So, so the Transportation Benefit District is a two tenths of a percent sales tax collected by the city. And it in twenty, help me here, Mark, it's.
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen is, the voters authorized that. And here it is under the governance section. So those funds go to street projects. That's maintenance, operations, capital projects, that sort of thing. I'll get more into that soon. If you remember, I had, I gave you the payment condition index report. And so the PCI is the acronym for that was in the mid-sixties. That was like eight years ago or something. We've improved significantly with the TBD funding. We're in the mid-seventies now with our index. Hundred is perfect, that's all brand new pavement just done. It obviously degrades from there. So a mid-C for a city this old is really good. And the TBD has been the reason why. Without this funding, there's no way we'd able to gain more than ten points in the PCI index. It means millions of dollars went into the system. So if you look down the bottom of the screen there, in twenty sixteen, we collected almost two hundred and seventy-five thousand in TBD. That's at two tenths of a percent sales tax. In twenty twenty-four, last year, we collected seven hundred and forty-one thousand. So the revenue's gone up over, you know, that year process, what is that, eight years significantly? And twenty sixteen was only a partial year, though. The first full year of the tax was twenty seventeen, because I think its collection started in February, March of twenty sixteen. So that's why it was down a little lower. So one thing we are doing with the TBD is leveraged strategy on the bottom left there that we try to go and take TBD dollars and match funding from WASDOT and other grant opportunities, like Olympic Highway North was one of those where we leveraged a small amount of TBD dollars to get three point eight million dollars, combined with some other grants and that sort of thing. So it was very successful as using TBD, which is limited resources to leverage larger dollars that are available. So if you look at the upper right here, like I said, our revenue was seven hundred and forty-one thousand last year. We had forty thousand dollars in interest earnings. We had some savings come back in projects. We don't spend it all on projects when we close them out. That was the Front Street project that we paid with the county in Brockdale Road. We had sixty-two thousand that came back in last year. So our total revenue is almost eight hundred and forty-five thousand in twenty twenty-four. And I explained these expenditures a little more down below on the bottom right. But we have operations for the street fund is seven forty-one. We had projects, and that's M slash O means maintenance and operations. And I haven't coded down there how they all add up. And then Capitol Street Fund Projects, which is coded CFS down below, is eight hundred and thirty-two. So you could see our expenditures exceeded our revenue. And if you go down below, you'll see I'm stacking up projects here, right? So that we have the transportation comp plan that we're working on right now. That's the capacity component of the comprehensive plan, transportation. And so that'll be very useful going into the future. What do we build next? What signal, what roundabout, what roadway need, that sort of thing? They could be city projects, or they could be developer projects also, right? We have a budgeted project for Mason County to help us some chip seals. That was primarily where Cascade Gas went in. They paid us to offset the cost they went and cut up a bunch of roads. We collected some fees back for them and then put some TBD funding on top of that to complete some chip sealing in the city. We have the PCI report that I spoke of earlier, that's been completed. ADA transition plan is almost complete. You'll be seeing that in a couple of meetings, talking about the sidewalks and handicap ramps and that sort of thing. Capitol Hill paving was completed last summer, and a little bit of that money came back again, like I spoke of. We have a budgeted project for the Olympic Highway North project I was talking about, the grinding inlay up there. We're putting into a reserve fund for the maintenance yard replacement. And that's a longer term project, probably about a six million dollar project. We got money in the bank now, just over two million dollars. We're trying to save up for that project and not have to do loan funding. Our Pine Street Yard, if you people have been on the tour, you'll see why, there's a lot of reasons why we want to move the yard. This is probably five years now, that sort of thing is longer term. But we're saving up to make a difference and then reuse that facility down there for other operations that we need. Safe routes to school, that's been completed. And then downtown street trees is budgeted, we should be going to bid soon. Next slide, please. So here's the fun part. This is the projects at work. So the downtown connector was paid with TBD dollars. Brockdale paving was also supported by those dollars. Western Gateway was more recent. The Civic Center parking lot was recent. Thirteen Avenue Chip Seal was, I think it was twenty twenty-two when that happened. Great project, it really made a difference out along over by the hospital. Down at the bottom here, you can see the safe routes to school slide. So that was at Seventh and Franklin right over here. And Evergreen Elementary, we did a bunch of improvements over there. And then up by the high school over to the Huff and Puff Trail, the crossing from that parking lot was also put in with safer routes to school. Next slide. So Olympic Highway North, we're going to be restoring that road soon. I found some before and after. So this is Turner Avenue before, it was highly distressed pavement. You can see after, that was some years after too. That project's a little older now. What year came? Twenty eighteen. So Front Street paving, which was two years ago, Lake Boulevard before and after, which is an aging project, a little older. And then Olympic Highway, we're showing at Ice Street, the TBD dollars are supporting an upgraded crossing at Ice Street. And then on Olympic Highway South, up by Shelton Outfitters, there's going to be a sidewalk that walk put in across the street. You can see the yellow down there. The sidewalk doesn't exist there, there's a guardrail, and we need to connect the two gas stations basically right there. And then we're looking at a project of railroad avenue, Eighth Street and First Street, the future project down the road to complete the improvements that we did with Western Gateway, go down all the way to First Street with them. Next slide. So some of the maintenance activities we do with TBD dollars are, is street sweeping is partially supported by TBD. It's also supported by the stormwater funds, part of our stormwater permit, we're required to do street sweeping every year. A lot of roadside mowing, that's to keep the vegetation down. You don't want trees growing right on the edge of the road. One, they're dangerous. Two, they start blocking sight distance corridors when you're going around corners and that sort of thing. Intersections, we do a lot of mowing at, you see that? Snow removal, last year wasn't very big on snow. Prior years though, we got wall up. When I first got here, it was like twenty twenty, or maybe it was twenty twenty-one, we had a really big year, very active year. Signal maintenance, you see that truck out all the time, they're doing stuff on the signals. Pothole patching is very regular. We do sidewalk grinding. We just got done with a bunch of downtown areas right before the Forest Festival. We paint crosswalks and stripe every year. We have a Vector truck that does a bunch of digging for us. It really saves guys back. And we also have a brand new patch truck, it's called Patch Squat. It's on the side of it, we had a little community contest for that. Grinding and overlaying, that's where the grinding machine takes the pavement out, and then we inlay into the pavement to restore the surface. And that is it for the TBD report, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions for Kate?
For Jay, if we had a point one percent increase in TTD council matically, would that have been three hundred and seventy thousand dollars more for next year?
Very close to that, yep.
That's all.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
Thank your crew for all the hard work.
Yeah, they work hard, and I appreciate what they do every day, so. And I'm also available for tours if anybody's interested. I always offer, about every month I get the green van out. So get ahold of me if you'd like to go out on a tour to see some of these things again, okay?
Oh, one more thing, the TBD is on the ballot, right, November?
Yes.
The renewal, it's not an increase, it's just a straight renewal.
Straight renewal, August fifth, okay? And we're all doing that. One thing I forgot to mention is the project this year that I'm doing with the county is up on West Mountain View. We're overlaying streets that were paved probably about thirty to forty years ago. And structurally, they're pretty sound, the asphalt is really dry, the binder is gone from the asphalt. So we're going to put in a two inch overlay, I'm working with the county. It's currently scheduled for right around July fifteenth. We're going to be getting out some notifications and that sort of thing up there. But that's a great project that we're doing with the county this year, similar to Capitol Hill and Front Street, where we get them for a couple of days to assist us. But that's a great project that we're doing with the county this year, similar to Capitol Hill and Front Street where we get them for a couple of days to assist us.
Then there are flyers out to the TBD as well, is that true?
Yeah, the, the brochures are going out with city utility bills this month. Uh we've got a whole webpage on the city's website to further um explain what the, what the projects are and how the TBD functions.
Will our red condition index go up or down with this flat maintenance of the TBD?
Yeah, uh with the current funding, the way it is, it's going to stay about the same. Um our new PCI report said that you spend this much money, you're going to get about what we have. So we're probably not going to get into the eighties without getting more revenue in, but we should maintain what we have. Especially if we're leveraging and getting the projects out, you know, uh those dollars, the TBD dollars. And most of the leveraging that we're doing is for the collector roadways, right? Uh we can't get grant dollars for local streets. That's why we're doing a bunch of things with the county, but we're leveraging uh state money for the orchillials and collector roadways.
Yeah, I just wanted to, once again, thank you for what you've done. You gave the project so much more walkable in the city and all the things you've done. Crossing streets, making everything more visible, the accessibility that's on, that's on the um, on the curves now. Um so thank you for getting that money and using it correctly and leveraging it so that we have um. Good roads, safe streets to walk on and all the hard work that you did.
You're welcome. Appreciate your support.
Anything else for Jim?
I was just curious. You were talking about the overlay on the west, did you say Mountain View area?
Yes.
Um so you said it's not so bad. It's been there for about thirty years. We're going to do an overlay. How long dude will that extend us for that?
Yeah, uh we probably should get another thirty years out of it because they're low volume residential roadways, not a lot of trucks. And so uh this overlay on top of the old pavement surface, which isn't highly fractured. Um should get a good service life, probably another thirty years. Um we do have to crack seal it about every five years though. And that's one of the most important maintenance activity is keep the water out of the roadway from freezing and popping it.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, Jay. All right, we have no business item this evening. Our first action item is resolution for stormwater permitting. Engineering technician Kenny will provide us details.
Uh just to provide a quick recap and summary, uh this is not very often we'll hear him talk about this. This is essentially extending an existing agreement slash contract that we have with Conservation District. They take care of our base two M P S or want to protect public education outreach portion of that, which. That was a fairly small portion of the work that goes on to do that. Small, it's very large. And we don't have the capacity to do it and M C D specializes in that. So essentially what this does is gives our city manager, the authority to sign the level two where then we're able to. Existing ILA that uh stands previously presented the strategy schedule budget. That strategy schedule budget covers twenty three months, which puts us through the next capacity grant cycle. But just to recap, that capacity grant comes from the public technology. It's a recurring two year long funding cycle grant. It is not competitive, it has been so what we're doing is giving money to the city or just for us from the state. Using it to pay the conservation district to public for us to save.
All right. Mary, anyone have public comment?
No, nothing.
Right. May I have a reading of resolution number one, three, eight, seven dash zero, five, two, five?
Resolution number one, three, eight, seven dash zero, five, two, five. A resolution of the council of the city of Sheldon, Washington, approving a strategy, schedule and budget with Basin Conservation District. For Western Washington, based through municipal stormwater permit, public education and outreach efforts. And authorizing the city manager to sign the letter of acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve a resolution number one, three, eight, seven dash zero, five, two, five. Ask for sent to.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
Kenny, just wanted to thank you for working on this project and working with our partners at the Mason Conservation District, like I said two weeks ago. Beautiful that what we're doing with Conservation District, all the work they do up at the Home Park and um the work that we're doing out in the bay and also. The uh Pollinator Garden over there by the farmer's market and Civic Center. And the strawberries are there, so both are fresh. Go pick up. They're, they're, they're amazing. Uh so please thank our, please thank our partners in this project.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kenny. We have a motion this second to approve resolution number one, three, eight, seven dash zero, five, two, five. Ask for sent to. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Well, who cares? Our next is a letter of support, Mason County Commission regarding funds from House Bill fourteen oh six. City Manager Mark Ziegler has details for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, Council. Um so I'm bringing you a draft letter of support to the Mason County Commissioners regarding um a request for funding for. A feasibility study for the structure at two one eight North Third Street from New Horizons Communities. Uh the city and the county both received a letter uh requesting funding to uh conduct a feasibility study to look at the former Community Lifeline Building. For conversion to permanent supportive housing by New Horizons. Uh obviously, the city has not budgeted anything for those, the use of those funds. Uh it was taken up for consideration by the county commissioners on April twenty first. That discussion revolved around essentially what. The city's opinion was and what the council thought. Uh later that day, Mayor Nisco and I met with uh council or commission chair, excuse me. Uh Trask and then uh County Administrator Neary to further discuss um, you know. The, the project and, and where the city might lie with um with support. Um we communicated to them that it's a permanent supportive housing project, therefore it's allowed within the CRV zone at that area outright. It does not take council action to be approved. Um so they could go through the permitting process. The only action that may be quasi judicial is potentially a variance for parking. So it's just like uh an apartment complex, if you will. In that land use zone. Um. Further, uh we discussed the ILA between the county and the city that was adopted in twenty nineteen or executed in twenty nineteen. That established um a cooperative agreement between the county and the city that outlined how we may cooperatively. Address uh affordable housing um projects within the city with, with available resources, available funds. House Bill fourteen oh six was passed um by the legislature in twenty eighteen that allowed for a pass through of state sales tax. Um to be collected locally for affordable housing projects. At that time, it was point oh oh seven three percent. Oh, seven three percent, right? Um that the city could collect um for projects at that time. Uh the city elected to enter into this interlocal agreement with county. Um under that legislation, the county could collect on behalf of the city if the city. Would forego that collection and combine those funds for um more appropriate and impactful uses. Um the estimated amount at that time in twenty eighteen was about eighteen thousand dollars, that point oh seven three percent. So again, the interlocal agreement outlined uh several tenants uh within that was that a member of the Shelton City Council would serve on the. Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board Committee to make recommendations to the county commission. For dispersment of those funds and those funds would need to be spent within the city of Sheldon. Uh that further discussion uh led to then Administrator Neary saying about five hundred thousand dollars is left in the. Uh in the county's coffers from those fourteen oh six funds. Um. And I believe at that time, uh about fifty five thousand dollars of those funds were spent on a Mason County Housing Needs Analysis. So uh in front of you tonight is a draft letter to the county commissioners outlining the uh the ILA. Um the role of the Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Committee and the support uh council for the project as a permanent supportive housing project. And the fourteen oh six funds that would have been collected by the city that per the ILA would be spent in the city for these types of projects.
Anyone say a public comment?
Oh, yeah.
I'll speak.
Excuse me?
Yeah, please.
So we're going to have an exemption for an area that wasn't slated for an apartment building ever in a neighborhood. So where do you know which, so we're going to do an exemption. How many people are going to be parked in there? Where, where's that parking going to be at? Uh I'm kind of concerned about that. I think we need to really make sure that we look into this. Uh before we just go and improve something. Obviously, I'll have conversations with the county commissioners as well. Uh I am not in support of this at all. Uh was there a study session on this? I'm not sure. I also put in a public records request to the county and I'll do it here in the city as well. Uh because if I'm not mistaken, there was funding that was provided to that building for infrastructure for sprinkler systems. So how did those sprinkler systems get involved? What kind of infrastructure and water systems were brought down to there? And at the sale of that building, is that funding going to get returned back to uh the city and or the county of those taxes? Or is that just going to be a wash and thrown out? Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, council, have any questions? Comments, your questions, remark?
So this is about a feasibility study, right?
Mr. Mayor. Motion first.
Oh, yes. Need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve the letter to the Mason County Commissioners regarding the House Bill fourteen oh six funds. And authorize them to sign the letter on behalf of the council.
I can.
All right, comments or questions?
So this is a feasibility study? Yes?
Correct. So it, it would analyze the building, uh land use zoning, what would be required to convert it into fifteen permanent supportive.
All the questions that were just asked will be answered by the study.
Uh with our, so regarding the parking, our land use code allows for a variance. If the parking from, from one use to the next use does not increase by more than twenty percent, they can, they can a um request a variance. That goes in front of the city's city's hearing examiner. So there certainly has to be uh a traffic impact analysis done and a greater analysis on. What type of parking is going to be needed for this type of, of facility compared to what the previous use was, which was uh Sheldon.
And New Horizons is the organization that works at the Veteran Village, is that correct?
Yes, they, yeah, conduct and manage uh Veterans Village.
Okay. Just a couple of questions I wanted to bring out. Um. Yeah, I, I'm in favor of this uh study and it's what the commissioners asked for with what can we think? And I think this will increase the number of beds available in this housing premises that we have. So um I'm in favor of looking into this and improving this, this statement for the study.
This doesn't change. E, I, I believe you mentioned that the land use currently would allow this. If they wanted to do it outright, they could just do it with a hearing. Adjustment maybe on park.
To the park, correct.
Yeah, thank you.
And uh but I believe that Commissioner Randy Edelman also asked for this letter of support as well um in one of their meetings. Um basically, uh Councilmember Munitara said this is a study just to see if it's feasible to, to turn this into, what, a twelve unit apartments? Pretty much fifty, fifteen unit apartment building and um. And the money has been sitting there for, since two thousand seventeen, I think, um and really not been used. And it's money that's been collected on behalf of the city that the county really hasn't dispersed in, in anything yet. So. Um we're just asking the county to use money they've collected for us for this study, correct?
As the ILA states that those funds shall be spent within the city limits.
But those funds could be used in a different way also, correct?
For affordable housing purposes, correct.
So this isn't for all of that, all the time, all right?
But it's been eight years and they haven't used a dollar. The county has a dollar of the funds. They actually have their own, they actually have like a half million dollars of their own money. In the same fund that they haven't used because together it's zero point one four six, I believe, percent of. Of it, it's not a sales tax. It's a credit to the six point five percent we give the state that they take, actually we don't give.
The six point five percent the state collects and it's passed, portioned as passed through to local jurisdictions under this.
Yes, credit, credit back, yeah.
Right.
So it's really not uh. This, this is kind of like money sitting there waiting for a project to happen. So, all right, anything else?
I guess what I was really hoping that. Instead of a feasibility study for just that location, that it would have been a little more broad. There's a option on location and that's what I was really hoping for because. I don't know if that's the best place for housing.
Well, it, well, the housing is actually, it's actually zoned for that kind of housing. The, the parking may, may be an issue down the road, but it's actually already zoned for that. So anybody could just buy it and do the same thing. We are definitely in need of some supportive housing.
I agree that we are. I just don't know if that is the best location and even for them, I don't know if it's a best location for them.
I mean, Trask was supportive housing, correct?
Correct. And it's not in the middle of the downtown district.
Pretty close.
This is only a study to get more information about how we should do so. But it's also recapturing some of the power that exceeded back in twenty eighteen. To the city to make decisions on what Sheldon wants, not what the county wants. But I think what we should do is invest in the city and for its residents and for the people who put that housing. And for people who need supportive housing who are otherwise unhoused.
So if we, we say yes, then they take fifty five thousand dollars of the dollars that we could have used in a different way. Um somehow for housing in our community. And let's say that.
There's no wonder fifty five thousand been there.
Well, let's, let's, let's get apples, apples. We have about eighteen thousand dollars a year. So we have about seventy thousand dollars in that fund. The county had, the rest is their money. So we only have about eighteen thousand bucks a year um in there. So we don't have five hundred thousand dollars. We only have maybe seventy, maybe. Something like that.
Right. So and fifty five of that would be going to the study, which means there wouldn't be much left over.
No, I think fifty five is what they used um for their fund to do a study down uh years ago. Um. This is about seventy five thousand bucks, isn't it? For the study?
According to the housing needs analysis, I think it was about fifty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was about the same. Sorry for the confusion. It's about the same as what the um New Horizons request is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But my concern here is if we spend this, that it's not feasible, then we just lost this money and it didn't actually feel to help. And that's my concern. I really want those dollars to go to be helpful. Um. And so that, that is, that's my concern here. I, I hate wasting money.
I can definitely share that concern, but it's been there for eight years and nobody's actioning it. So it's sitting there, a project has presented itself an opportunity to use the money. And we're just saying, hey. We would support it. So I mean, whether you support it or not, it does really matter. But it's, you know, it's. Nobody's asked for the money until now. So it's not like we're choosing from a list of possible projects. There's hypothetical projects, but. There's one available at the moment.
This is also what our council member who's on the board approved when she was at county housing advisory committee meeting. So she approved that to put that.
Let's not speak for the people who aren't here.
That's our, the member of our board has this. This was, that's what it says right here. A member of our board of our city was at this meeting making the decision, representing our city. So I'm not speaking for her. I'm saying this is what that board said.
That, the.
She part of that board.
That, that board actually, that board actually asked the um. Made a motion to actually approve the project, not the funding. This, this letter for funding is, is coming from this, this council right now. So that, that I was at the, that board meeting, that, that was, the project was supported, not the funding. This is different and the, the funding's different. So and I don't want to speak for Councilmember Sap. She's not here, so.
Yeah, my, my understanding is the minutes from the meeting, like Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Committee. Recommended to the county commissioners the support of the project. They did not have a funding element to it.
Okay, thank you for.
Okay, just to make sure that we don't speak for somebody. All right, anything else? All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the letter to the Mason County Commissioners regarding House Bill fourteen oh six. Funds can authorize me to sign on behalf of the council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Nay.
Aye.
Tight, motion fails. Mark, city manager report.
I've got nothing to raise and I apologize. Just uh. Looking day to day stuff.
All right, council, I have any other items for discussion? Um.
Looking forward to the summer in the park and get your kids out there and go see the movies and go spend time with the kids.
All right. Our next meeting is scheduled Tuesday, July first at six P M. We have a thirty session Tuesday, June twenty fourth to six P M. This meeting is adjourned at six forty nine P M.